It's okay. She's still cooking. Matty, I'm still trying to get together with him. I've been off all week.
Okay.
I'll just talk to you before I do anything.
I did. Probably be a moot point until they decide after.
Yeah.
So. Well, yeah. Very cool.
I thought you were burning bridges. He's on 39th.
Seen it.
No, get him out. No, no. Go ahead.
What's happening? Maybe something.
City.
Hate this.
Sit here, buddy.
I'm just tired. What are you tired of?
Oh, I'm tired. You wouldn't think it would hurt you. It's not much of a life.
Yeah.
It is mine.
Yeah, so I'm off Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah.
You got a phone?
When I worked at the school, I was 5:00, 6:00. It was kind of nice because I was, you know, I'd be there.
Well, I work for O'Brien. I have to pass at 3:00 in the morning and get back.
Oh, yeah, it's not like I picked up at the school. He doesn't have any guy.
Who else is in there?
Well, you didn't eat your milk.
Oh, hand.
They showed you my discount.
Because you can only be a teenager for so long.
No. Roberta. Roberto, I need one of those.
Cause yeah, you have it.
No, I think you gotta get it.
Okay.
Oh, I'll share with Bill.
It's so long. Here, there's one, one here.
No, I don't want it.
No, forget it. Nice hair, too, Hank.
Thanks. At least I got some.
It's okay. The money I saved. Oh, Roy's over there.
Yes, they are.
Not me. Oh, yeah, 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 I saw that. That's a good one. You guys saw that today. I got an email. Yeah, it's a great membership. Feeling that for secret, though. Let up.
Just bring that here. Don't take a credit.
Just tell me their role.
Yes. Your what?
The day it opened, I was gonna go to that day. And the lady goes, I haven't had a notice of.
I'm excited.
We went Friday at Rachel's. I bought a brick and traction. Come up, I'll beat me up. Those are something I've never seen. Long as you're by the back. But I understand the whole aspect of. It works.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call. Bill Sharons.
Here.
George Gunnens here. Hank Masch.
Yep.
Robert Navrigas.
Yes.
Risa Briggs.
Yep.
Chief Rhodes.
Here.
All present. This evening, we're going to do chief evaluation. I'd like to remind the public, there's no comment allowed during this meeting. This is strictly a business meeting. So please respect that. Thank you very much. Risa, you have the floor.
Well, I think we'll go through the first things on the form.
Okay. And we all have the correct form?
Sure have.
Okay. Steve, you've got the same form that I just got. We're all on the same page. Okay. Okay, I'm all set. Are you all set, Risa?
Um, did you wanna tell everybody how we're gonna do this as far as individually or out loud?
I'll leave that up to you as far as how you're gonna handle it.
Okay, well, how do you feel about this, Steve? Should we just read them off and go down the list? And then we'll just all put our own rating, but not put that out loud?
Is that okay, we do this, Steve?
Yeah, I'm interested to see. I'll send them myself.
Okay, well, you have to put your own self rate down, too. Okay, see that part?
Sure.
Okay. Number one, provides good overall leadership. And I think, George, don't you agree? Maybe the board can discuss this openly if they feel like it? Or ask Steve questions?
How do you wanna mark it for? Are you marking 1 through 10?
No, 1 and 2, sure.
1 and 2?
1 meets expectation, and 2 needs improvement.
Okay.
And, and for no opinion, because you don't observe or haven't been observing. So we have three categories we can rule on, okay? So I have no objection if that's the way you want to go for the board to ask questions.
Well, the reason I'm saying, because Bill hasn't been here long enough. And you may have the most questions.
Right.
Anybody has questions, go ahead.
It's hard for me to mark anything because I don't, I don't really exact duties and I haven't been around long enough.
Then the "and" would be the right answer for you. If you come to a situation where you don't know the answer, they just put "and" because it's a neutral base.
Okay.
You're shaking your head, why?
No, I'm not. Bobby, it's bobbing.
Okay, okay. Or, yeah, "and" because.
I'm just bobbing.
Yeah, or "and A" because most of us realize, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Risa, on that self-evaluation, do we ask Steve what his rating on it is?
He's gonna put his rating down.
Huh?
He'll put his rating down.
Okay, so, okay.
But then the other question I have, maybe we could answer this. This should just all be anonymous? We don't put our names on these and we tally them?
The way District Q uses this tool is we would've sat down in advance and put this together. Then you would've come together as collective and developed a collaborative number and then comments. And then Steve would've done the same thing. Then you all come together. And so this is what we thought, this is what I thought. Where can we improve? What went good this year? What went bad last year? How can we fix that? Where do we wanna go from here? That kinda stuff, so. Typically, you would've gone through this and answered every one of those in your mind. How'd he do? How'd I do? I did okay. I could've done better. And make notes. I could've done this a little bit better. I could've done that a little bit better. This was a good outcome for what we were hoping for. And then from that, you want to get from this entire encounter, kinda put together a plan for next year. Where do you want to get accomplished next year? What do you see wanting to accomplish? And you kinda marry that together. And then the district kinda marks his own forward. If there's an area that he needs to improve in, you articulate that. You need to be an EMTP. I'll use that for an example. You know, maybe he doesn't need to be. But let's say you made that a criteria. Well, we would articulate that in this process that you're short, got a shortcoming in EMS. And we want you to do that. I know you don't, but that's where we would identify that. Or you wanted to get fire officer 1, or fire officer 2, or you need to spend more time. Whatever you felt that he needed to improve on, we would articulate that in this document as well. And so how'd you do with this part? Cause you've got three customers you really serve. You serve the public, you serve the staff, and you serve the board. And so he has to have a relationship with each one of those groups. So that's how this is structured. Is so you can articulate, or you can talk about how well he did with his troops, how well he did with the community, and how well he did with your relations here. And we all know, let's get that big elephant out of the room. This hasn't been the smoothest operation over the last year. So there's a lot of controversy. And what I'd ask you to do is kinda let some of that go away, cause we're trying to move forward, not go backwards. Spend the night talking about what went bad, that won't get us far. But what went well, and what can't we do anymore of that caused some of that problem? And I think, you know, that elephant's out there, let's get that done and over with. Say, hey, next time, we could've done this better. This didn't go well. Why didn't it go well? Well, we failed to communicate. And then that's where everybody takes responsibility and ownership, in the fact that communication is a two-way street. We all, myself included, can improve, constantly improve. And so you all, you go through that document and say, okay, how are we doing this one? How are we doing that one? Well, this one here was weak. But just don't say it's weak. Give your employee, or give your chief, some ideas of what you're looking for, what that expectation might be. One time in one of my evaluations, the board said, I need more public contact. And so what does that mean to you? Cause I belong to church, I belong to Lions, I'm football official, I do this. What else of that shall I do to be more involved with the public? And one guy said, well, maybe you could spend some time going to the grocery store and talking to people about the fire department. I said, well, that's a possibility, but that's not very productive. So let's, give me a tool, or give me an idea of what you're looking for, so I can make your benchmarks. So that's what you, this is between the five or six of you tonight. How do we get moving on down that proverbial road? That's what evaluations are all about. So, and I'm just here to help you, guide you through it if you need my help. But you're evaluation of your chief. You're relatively new in this, so you're gonna have input, but you don't have a lot of the history that Risa has, and that George has, and that Hank does, and that Robert does. But it would be pretty easy to say, there was a part of your life as an organization, one of the things were pretty solid. I can move back to July, when I got on board. And so we know that that could've been done better by every person in this room. That could've been handled better. So talk about it. What went wrong? What do we need to do to fix it?
Roy.
Sir.
Am I understanding you correctly? You said we should've gotten together before the meeting this evening?
You.
We as a board got our ratings in here before we opened the meeting?
For that tool to have worked, you can do it tonight. But for that tool, and how we use that tool, is when I do chief marlars, I would've got that at my last meeting, and I'd have brought it to tonight's meeting. And we would've first sat down with all five of those reports and said, I've got it here, here, and here. How'd you do? How'd you, how'd you, how'd you? Okay, good. Sit down with the chief and say, this is how we all scored you.
So we should've taken this home, done it ourselves?
Yep. It's your, it's first off, it's your evaluation, but you're gonna do a collaborative group when you're done.
Right.
Because remember, you speak as the collective.
Right.
And just because you don't like something personally, does not, you cannot speak for the entire board. You can speak for George.
Right.
And you can certainly tell him what you believe could've been held better. But when you give him an evaluation, that's coming from the five of you. It's not coming from you individually. It's coming through your collective. And that's why you collaborate and come together with a composite score when you're done.
Okay.
We really take out the number piece in that, hey, is it good? Or do you need to improve? That's really what he needs to know. I need to do more of this. I need to do less of that. I need to do whatever that might be.
Well.
And you would know what those would be, and you articulate that, or share that with your chief.
I'm kind of in a dilemma here. We don't have that completed, so how do we proceed with this?
Well, you may want to tonight, because you're learning, and you're trying this, this is kind of our first thing, is go through question by question. Let the public hear what you're gonna be asking you. Read it out loud. You score it. When you get all done, look at all your scores and say, okay, we need to work on the differences. You've got a 1, 1 and a... You need an area of improvement. I focus on areas that need to be improved on, so he knows what he needs to improve on.
Right.
But you can go through that. There's not too many questions there. It won't take you 20 questions to read through that. You've had this document since last meeting, cause I know, I gave it to you last time.
November.
Two meetings ago.
Yeah, that's right. We've had it quite a while.
Okay, so. And I got one here, too.
No, you're not in that yet.
This is a.
Hey, why don't you start off with your questions, Hank?
We just wanna start by reading the first question.
First question, yes.
Provides good overall leadership.
Okay. So I guess we're all gonna go ahead and score your chief on that one, and whatever way you wanna do it. Is that what you're looking for here, Roy?
Yeah. Once again, George. You can really do this any way you feel comfortable doing it. This is structured to open up dialogue. That's it. He needs to know where he's doing good. He needs to know where he's not doing good. He needs to be able to tell you what you could do to make him more successful. This is an interchange between you guys.
Well, the reason I'm suggesting what we're doing here is so that the board is involved in it as well. So that everyone on the board is involved.
Absolutely.
Okay, and we go through, we all take our turn, and then come back. And sometimes we'll end up having to redo another question.
However best you want to get through this thing, you march.
Okay.
I don't think it's all X and stone, so.
Okay, well, Bill asked me to read them, and so I can read them out loud, so that everybody knows what it is.
She's gonna read them also, which would be quite.
Okay.
Yeah, and then everybody can hear.
And then we'll.
Yeah, everybody can hear then what we're scoring. Okay, provides good overall leadership. Provides a program of sound organization and management. Hires or enlists qualified and effective employees. And like I said, any board member that wants to ask a question, you know, go ahead. So, respected by his employees. Motivates his employees towards maximum performance. Delegates responsibility effectively, making the most of the knowledge, skills, and abilities of his staff. Constructs and administers an annual budget knowledgeably and within adopted limits. Is decisive, able to reach timely decisions and initiate action. Follows through on commitments, obligations for projects, and staffing needs according to the district mission, goals, and overall philosophy. Is enthusiastic and optimistic, creating a positive work environment for the staff. Deals with staff honestly and fairly, and maintains open communication, decision-making processes, and delegates effectively. Is knowledgeable about divisional projects, funding, and staffing of the organization. Is committed to the success of the district. Efficiently uses district resources. Next page. Provides the board with adequate information and training to make sound decisions. Initiates and facilitates the decision-making process as needed. Maintains effective communication, both written and verbal, with the board regarding projects and district administration. Is accessible to the board, either personally or through designated staff members. Plans and/or oversees agendas and materials for presentation to the board in a concise, clear, and comprehensive manner. Follows up on all problems and issues brought to his attention. Responds positively to suggestions and guidance by the board in the areas of program development, problem solving, and future directions for the district. Proposes organizational and long-term goals prior to each fiscal year. Accurately represents the district, its goals, policies, and interests, and positions to its staff, patrons, and external organizations. Represents the district in a positive, professional manner. Actively promotes the district by being sufficiently visible, and accessible throughout the community via personal appearances, use of the media, written communication, attendance at local meetings, et cetera. Participates in district professional activities at the local level. Communicates adequately with area public officials and legislators. Has a clear sense of the established purpose and adopted policies of the district, and this is reflected in his recommendations and directions. Is knowledgeable and compliant with regard to all regulatory agencies. Now, on the back, we each have to write several little essays. One is what did the chief do well this past year? Another is what could the chief improve upon? What should the chief's priorities be for the coming year? And any additional comments? I should like to ask a question to Steve. Only because I'm not a mind reader. What are your priorities for the upcoming year?
Well, I'm hoping that we can all get together and do that. But what I'm hoping at this year is to finish up on 1080, get a unit that we can get across the bridges and all the accessories. I'm kinda big on equipment and vehicles, so that's where my... Are these ways, so, yep.
Do you remember the equitable access policy?
Yep.
And you were getting around? Did you, did you get around, or how far?
We haven't gone every road. We've gotten around.
Half?
I'd say more than half, actually. Maybe 60, 70 percent. And what we found was exactly, we found, we know where the bridges are, we can cross. So I know where there's some steep roads that we can get our engines into, but it's dicey. So hopefully this next unit will help us out. I wanna revisit the long-term strategic plan we made before I back with Stuart Crander, and then the two members of the Living Glass Community Support Group, and myself, and Mike Puffley. I'd like to revisit that because we can amend it. Instead of buying all new equipment, we can amend, do some grants and used equipment. I think it's gonna reduce the amount that needs to be committed every year, that it's gonna be committed.
Did you wanna have a committee? Or just revisit the one that we came up with?
I think, just the one we came up with, that did a lot of the footwork behind it. We just need to revisit it as a group.
I have a question. Steve, like I said, I knew this. What is the policy on access? Who's responsible for access? And how do you go about taking care of the access?
It's a uniform fire code, 2014, got it adopted statewide. So it has real basic standards. 12 foot wide, all wet road. 13 foot 6 height, clear trees, holds, wires, all that kinda stuff. Less than 20 percent grade. And then it adopts the Wildland Urban Interchange Code, which says 30 ton bridges. So the enforcement in this area is the state fire marshal. There's no county fire prevention anymore. It's the state fire marshal that enforces. All those factors are supposed to get identified during plan check. Now, there's been a little problem with that in the past. Sometimes it doesn't come through. We'll get, I'll get asked to go out and drive a road when a house is getting ready to be out. So on. Enforcement is with the state fire marshal. Enforcement on the DFPA land around here is with the DFPA, and so on. And that, if you look up at the map, the white parts there is us, and the rest is all DFPA. And we made a, through our mutual aid of DFPA and the other departments in the county, we adhere to DFPA's recommendations on burning, access, the covenants they do for construction, everything else. So that everybody's the same. Cause it'd be real hard on that map to have somebody, say, 500 Cus Bay Wagon Road, have a different fire code than somebody at 501, so.
I was just curious. Who's responsible? You know, if the homeowner's responsible, make sure it's.
Well, it is one of the plan checks. That's something we talked about a little bit last year, was doing some kind of public... Like, everybody here just heard the code. And so it needs to get out, and the people who can't get to need to know that and be forewarned. Because there's a lot, there's things that different departments do. Some departments say, hey, we're not gonna respond. Some threaten to call their insurance company and tell them they're not covered. Winston pulls up to the bridge, stops and walks in. They don't go across the bridge. That's what we should do. I don't wanna, we've already collapsed the, at least partially collapsed the bridge. I'm not gonna take a $300,000 truck across the bridge, it's not working.
Right.
And how do you prove it? Well, it's gotta be engineered. And so if there's any doubt, when I go out to drive a road, I just stop right there and say, you know what? It's going back to the county, require them to get an engineer. And that's a lot of money. When I first started here, one of the board members had a friend that was trying to develop a brand, DAB land. And they were talking about $60,000 engineering cost just on the road, cause he was living back in the section. So they, that was how this whole thing we were talking about started, actually. I'm not a bridge engineer, so my thing is I might do the best I can. I can get a brush truck to throw us over some small.
I was just curious, cause I know, I've had a friend that was dump trucking. He was going across the bridge and dumped it in the creek, so.
Enforcement wise, if we adopt the fire, the uniform fire code is adopted statewide now. It used to be that every county and city had it adopted. It's adopted statewide now. That just changed last year. So if we adopt that code as a board, then we have to provide enforcement capability, which we don't have. And I have to go down, our department has to be down in the county buildings doing the plan checks and so on. And I don't have the expertise to do that. We don't have a building initial on our department. In my mind, it's better to leave it to the state. We don't have as close a stuff. We, if I have an illegal burn, I can call the DFPA and have them come out here and sign it. And then code it, by the way, this has been happening a lot lately. People are still burning, this is a rural area, they still do burn barrels and that kinda stuff. If you burn anything, the wood, paper, leaves, natural stuff, that's a code enforcement problem, and that's not our problem. As long as they got clearance, they can burn. If they're burning something they're not supposed to, that's a code enforcement problem. And I'm gonna get that on the website, because we've been going on a lot of this. I don't have any enforcement powers on that. It's county's enforcement, DEQ, and fire department, all that stuff. Anyway, there you go. Did you wanna hear more of? I wanna get the budget. This is the second year, this will be the second year on our new budget. I wanna make sure that goes. I want to make sure that goes through nicely this week. And then a fourth thing is to public and community education, the website, get it up and running better. We used to spend some time at the farmer's market. We've got to find some way to reach to the public, reach out to the public here. And it's always a time problem and everything else. But there's things we can do that are needed to reach out more, and it's an education part. Yeah, we get to the school pretty good and other stuff. We've got to reach the rest of the community.
Well, the only way I can see doing that would be a mailer, due to the fact that not everybody has an email. Not everybody goes to the post office, and everybody gets an email.
I think we've been carrying, like, the stuff you got, the fall stuff. We carry that on our hands now and provide it when we go out and call some stuff. I mean, that's the way to reach people. I think the farmer's market is a good way to reach some people, but it's the same crowd every week. The Grange is a good opportunity to reach another group of people. I guess I'm still working on the equipment, outfitting it, personal safety gear for the firefighters, and getting all that stuff up. We, ten years ago, we were in a bad shape, and we had great people and bad equipment. Then we went through the levees, and we went through the emigre grants, all that stuff. We brought up the equipment, and we're working a certain way. And we're still working that way to finish off outfitting everything. It took a while, but we're just about there. On this, I will say something about my management style. There's a whole bunch of things. We've been talking about modifying the station and doing all kinds of stuff. I'm a kind of guy that wants to do one or two things, get it done, and quickly spread out. And we have some major projects we've got to deal with and stuff. I want to get those things done first before I get distracted by long-term stuff, along those kind of things. But setting up some strategic goals and where we're going in the future is a great idea.
All right.
Sure.
When the, when the team here says staff, are we concluding the board on a staff, or should we?
I think we would want to separate the two. There's a relationship with the volunteers, and there's a relationship with the board. I think they're going to be different relationships. So I think, I thought it was broken down a little bit, so it talked about the staff and then it talked about the board.
Yeah, but not very much about the board. Why I was asking the question that, you know, are we supposed to change it a little bit?
I'll give it back. I can't remember how we got that laid out. Yeah, I think.
I think in staff is modified firefighters, but a lot of these things need to be talked about in relationship.
Sure, sure, it really does. So that's part of this, is to make sure that you've worked on your relationship too. So if it's not well documented there, put it in a different spot, talk about it. That's really what's all about. Because you don't really get a lot of opportunity to see the chief's interaction with volunteers. I mean, you see some of it, but you don't see the day-to-day opportunities. You just really don't get a lot of opportunity. Let's not say that you don't get some. If I guess if they were coming to you constantly with complaints that this guy is a worthless slacker, you know, that would be something to pique your interest. But I don't know that that's really the situation, you know. You may want to at some point have a, sit down with the volunteers and have that conversation. So how's our relationship, let's go the same direction. How's our relationship, and how's his relationship? And ask them. Yeah, they'll tell you, I'm sure they will. But that, you might want, you might want over time, make that a part of your process. You know, because again, for him, you want to find out from them that they believe as though he's doing a good job. You might think he's doing a wonderful job, and volunteer X might think he's doing a horrible job, or vice versa. You might think he's doing a horrible job, and they think he's doing a wonderful job. So this, a lot of this is based on your own personal observation. And sometimes we don't, as directors, don't get a lot of that opportunity to evaluate that. He sees them every single day, or almost every single day. A couple of them every single day, anyway. That help, George?
Okay. Thank you. That explained it for me, how about anyone else? No problem.
Okay. Is everybody complete with their report? Hey, how are you doing?
Let's go ahead, no way on me.
I have everybody just kind of ask any question on the board. Steve, if they have a question, or if not.
The only thing was director's comments, so. I have my own.
Okay, we'll go ahead and... The director's, we're going to pick up for the director's comments. If anybody can ask Steve a question. And anybody want to take the floor here as far as the directorship is concerned?
Reese has questions, go ahead and start with yours.
Well, it wasn't necessarily a question, it's something I just want to clarify. And since you reverted back to July, I'm going to take us back far back. And there's a reason. Because understand that the end of this, Steve, I would like an assurance from you that we'll get past this and it won't happen again. Okay?
I don't want anything to happen again.
Okay. I'm going to give everybody the chronology of the Workman's Comp status as it played out the last year, and some of the problems it caused, and I don't want to see them continue. We have to go back to December 26th of 2013. And you were there, Jerry, you were there, Kent, we were all on board that time. The comments, I may exclude you for the most part, okay?
I hope so.
Right. And Bob Russell had us all come together and meet insurance agents and blah, 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 to try to get our insurance going for this district, okay? And I think everybody remembers that. In January, Kent wrote a bill, paid a bill to WHA, Wilson Airgood. And I think everyone is under the same assumption that I was, that it included all of the insurance policies. Come to find out, it did not include Workman's Comp. They were still under Umpqua Insurance. Okay? That was fine until April. Bob Russell resigned in March. We had no form, we had no board. George and I had to go to the commissioners to get under the board members. That's when Robert. When I got a notice from Holland, Rick Holland at Umpqua Insurance, he made it very clear that they had been on a carbon copy that Liberty Mutual had sent out supposedly April 21st. The only thing I could ever find from Liberty Mutual on April 21st was saying that they had reviewed our loss history, and no losses had been reported, blah, blah, blah. Quote, "This information assists you." Well, it didn't, because at that time, they should have been sending a bill, which I have never found. And if people remember me sitting here at the July 9th meeting, I'm going, what bill? Where's the bill? I've never seen a bill. Well, I did a forensic investigation on this. May, the bill was never mentioned, the bill was nowhere. And June, Umpqua Insurance finally notified me that they did send the bill out the 14th of June, but our meeting had already been on July 11th. So it was already too late for our regular business meeting, but there again, I've never found that bill. Okay. Here and there. Umpqua Insurance should have notified us, but when I went and talked to them, they're accurate when they said we had fired them in December, they were no longer our agent of record. So they didn't notify us, even though they did have a notification from Liberty Mutual. Wilson Airgood didn't send us a bill, because they were never our agent of record. And when I wrote to Liberty Mutual through Wilson Airgood, Donna Holmes is our person that we're working with now, since Dave Pinnikook, I guess, is no longer our agent. And I asked her, did we ever get a bill from you? Because I never saw one. Her response was, hi, Risa, no, Wilson Airgood did not send any bill for Workman's compensation. Consequently, a fax had been sent, however, on the 3rd of July, and I think that was when you found out that we were going to be in arrears.
We were already in arrears.
Well, but no, because there's a 10-day grace period, which I called them and found out. Because when we had that problem, okay, it was paid on the 10th, because Robert and George made out the bill, George went down and paid it. They go, Liberty Mutual goes by the postmark. So we never lapsed. And Wilson Airgood has already sent us a statement saying that it went back to July 1st. We're fine. You can also have a 60-day grace period, but then you have a 60-day, and they put a risk on it, a risk assessment on it. But the point is, it was done, it was covered. My problem was the way you handled it. On the July 9th meeting, I really would have rather that you would have pointed it out to the board. We would have paid it, we did pay it. And everything could have been settled in a really reasonable, civil manner. And that's why I say now, at the end of all of this, Steve, I just want your assurance that you're not going to walk out on us again and get upset again and help us. Because we can't find everything, we can't remember everything, nobody can. And this is what I found, these are the facts, if anybody wants a copy. And it was just a situation, like I said, that I just, you said earlier you're not going to repeat it. I'll hold you to it. Okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Close it.
I did.
Put it away.
I did.
Move. Very good. Good.
Listen, side note, I'm confident that goes back to part of our meeting. And that's where your challenge here is developing that good, solid communication deal. And I think what happened there is it failed somehow. The right hand didn't know what the left hand was doing. Peter and Paul, Wilson Airgood had part responsibility, Umpqua Insurance had responsibility, you had responsibility, you had responsibility, and for God knows, I may have.
Well, let's blame him.
If that's what it takes, you go ahead and blame me, because I've got big, broad shoulders, and it's not going to affect my birthday at all, what do you do and what do you don't.
It's your birthday.
No, it's not. But the fact is, there's that, and that's one of the things that Steve and I talked about at a meeting and a half, or a meeting ago, is that we need to work on, that's our challenge, is making sure that you five are able to articulate to this guy what you want to, and you can articulate it back without getting all buzzed up and getting it going south. That's your challenge. And it really doesn't have to be, but that's your challenge. And you're absolutely right, that got messed up. And whether, you know, whether it was your fault, his fault, his fault, his fault, who cares? I suspect it was Robert's.
I'll take blame if we can move on. I told you that during that meeting, right?
Fact of that is, everybody was trying, and something failed there. And that's what we've got to work on, is those procedures. So you've got to plan in place that that won't happen in the future. And that's where you sit down and say, okay, this is, I got this, you handle this, you handle this, and the organization will be able to function. And I think that's part of what I've seen here in my time since July, is that I'm still not exactly sure the right hand knows exactly what the left hand's doing. And that's that, that communication piece.
Big problem, right there.
Understanding, okay. This is your guy, and if you'll notice in that document, it's really asking how he's handled a lot of stuff. Because it really is, he's your tool. He's the guy that's doing all this stuff for you. And so he needs to know that you've got his back, he needs to know what you expect, and he's got to keep you posted on how successful he's been, so.
And he is being successful. Don't ever doubt that you're not doing a good job, because you are.
Thanks, miss. Anyway, I'm off my soapbox again.
Anyone else have any comments to ask Steve? If not, Roy, what do we do from here?
Well, what I would do is, if you want to, is go through every one of those categories. It shouldn't take you a long time unless you come up to one that says you need improvement. And if he thinks he needs improvement, he should tell you what he thinks he needs to do. If you think he needs to improve, you need to help him understand what you're looking for. If you want him to grow six inches, he's going to say, can't make that happen. But I go with elevated shoes. But you need, he needs to know what you need, and then you just keep marching on forward. Yes, Risa?
How about if we just read them off, and unless somebody has a need improvement, we can just go right on through?
That's perfect, because what you want to articulate here, one, if you're totally dissatisfied with his behavior. And I don't think, I don't think that that's really the case here, but he needs to know where his shortcomings are. And if he's got shortcomings that he's not getting from you, this is his opportunity to say it. I need this from you, if I'm going to be successful here, so.
Well, it works both ways.
Absolutely.
Then we can just start, does, okay, number one, does anybody have a need improvement, or is it all one?
Have one.
Well, we don't need to hear, just if anybody.
I have a need improvement.
Yeah, let's get to them.
Go ahead. You have a need improvement.
Just explain it, then.
Which is, in a lot of ways, I see that he could do things a little bit better.
Tell him, I'm not doing it.
Yeah.
You know, somebody go organizational things with your people. I don't know that much about the outlook about the firefighters, but just as an servant. And I try not to step on your toes, because there's only one boss, as far as I'm concerned. And as far as firefighters, and I've always told you that, that you're it. If I've got something that I'm going to say to, or have you say to the firefighters, I'm going to talk to you first. I'm not going to go out there and step on their stuff when I need to talk to you. But I have seen a couple of things that I wasn't too happy with in the past. I'm sure we can work through it, if we're willing to do that. So it's not a big issue, and my disagreements or improvements are going to be pretty much along that line. I'm not going to be here to knock you completely out of the water, because that's not our goal here. Our goal is to... Our goal is to move on and make this a better board as well as better fire department.
So you're saying in my, in leadership, I'm a need improvement. So can you give me some ideas of what you'd want to do better?
Well, I, I have a few. There's a few things that I would have liked to have seen you take a better position as, as a chief, such as when there has been the meetings of disruption, you should have stepped in, taken control of your firefighters. That would have been something that would have gone a long ways with the board in respect and everything else. Sometimes you just have to put your foot down. Now, I'm not being like super critical about it. It's just an area that I thought that you were a little bit weak on, a couple of areas last year that I experienced. And that's what I base it on. Okay? So that's all I've got to say in that matter.
I, I have a thing on four and five. And I base that on the fact that one very hot day last summer, I saw you out there painting that shed all by yourself. I would really like to see either you delegated or you just, I don't know how you insist because we are volunteers, but try to, how do I put this? To, to get some help.
Utilize all the fire departments to help you achieve your goals.
Yeah, just get some help.
I can never.
So down to, uh, so, uh, so the delegation part?
Okay.
So are we doing like step by step? Cause I, I'll tell you what, I put two there too because I'm a doer. I always have been and that's one of my things. Now, I've got training delegated out to my assistant chief. And I've got vehicles delegated out to dog banks. And I've got medical to crisp. But a lot of the office work and stuff I haven't delegated out. In fact, I made a big step today. I delegated out to, Rich Tewitt doesn't know that. His wife has time at home and stuff, so she's gonna be taking, I'm just gonna email ordering and stuff to her and she's gonna take care of it and then tell me when she's done. That's gonna save me hours a week. I'm so happy.
But remember us, us to help you on some things too.
Uh, I have number six down as a need improvement. That's going, right, delegating of responsibilities. And I'm not talking about delegating out there, but when we see you out there painting that building, when you should be requesting firefighters to give you a hand.
Yep.
And I think you're a little bit overworked and paperwork and other organizational things that your time would be better spent taking care of that and we complaining to some of the firefighters. I'm sure that you can get somebody to volunteer. We as a board even have tried to volunteer on occasion. So, uh, that's one of the things that I've observed.
My, my problem, I, I voiced it to you before, but, um, uh, I, I'm retired. Four or five of us retired, the rest of them. Uh, this goes back all the way to 2008 when we, when this board, the previous boards talked about this levy and maybe even hiring out part timers to cover during the main stuff. Because at that time, the economy was ripping. Then in the last six years, the economy's been crappy. We have, we've had days where we're out there and there's eight people trying to get on the medic rate. Well, it's not anymore because of those long years unemployment's gone. Everybody's back to work now, except for us. Um, a, a key point about the office work, and I, and I agree, I'm overworked in the office. I don't mind doing the training. I don't mind doing the calls. I don't mind doing the chief, but I don't like, I do it because I know how to do it, but I don't like sitting in the office. But the thing that happened is the exact month that I took over as chief here, the office administrator beforehand left. And we haven't had a secretary to do all this stuff. And I think that's a, you can go back to the communication and the policies on who does what. There is a problem right there that when the office secretary left, the one that does all of the reports, records and everything, who's done it since then? And that's been a, a constant thing. We have been scrambling from one hotspot to another, bam, bam, bam.
Is there someone here though, that you can show how to do it and, um?
The reporting system I've been doing for about four years, that's a pretty hard deal. Plus there's certain things that are, uh, you gotta be a sworn person to get into the sheriff's department, the communications and all those kind of records. The only computer that's allowed to do this out in here, um, there's, there is some stuff and I, I, I've been offered help before and I, I kinda hold it close to the vest, but I dumped some today and I'm happy for myself. But I could, I could dump a lot more.
Okay.
Um, another thing is, uh, I, I deeply, uh, care for this fire department and everything. So if I'm out there painting, painting, uh, I'd rather paint than sit in office typing all day, you know? And those are my little habits. Those are my things that make me happy. So, um, if something needs to be done, I might just do it. I'm sorry.
It's one need to know overwork.
But I, I do agree with you. That's been, in my entire 42 period, I am a doer more than a delegator.
Okay. I've gotten number 12 simply because I've not observed you on that particular thing. And that is involve staff and appropriate decision-making processes and delegates effectively. So I can't score you on that because I've never seen you in action with your hand. Okay?
So we're going down pretty fast. At number nine, I put myself as a need improvement to follow through on commitments, obligations. There's a lot of little stuff that I haven't followed through on. Uh, one of them was, um, pest control here at the station.
Yes.
And, and it's kinda funny, but I, I let my personal priorities influence what I'm doing.
But you have a safety officer.
You guys are my, the five board members that are in charge of this district and I'm, uh, I'm prioritizing the stuff to do what I want first. And so the stuff you wanted ended up way down to number eight or number nine hundred percent. So that's a need improvement.
But I'm saying, don't we have a safety officer and you can shove it off on him?
Offer pest control?
Yeah, here, thanks.
It's just, um.
Make it safe.
It's, um, there's so many things that are so important to me and, and the legal stuff we have to do that are so far above, nobody got bit this year. I guess we're lucky, but it's so far above.
Yeah.
I don't even wanna spend, it's like, I don't have the time to even deal with it. And it'd be a simple phone call.
But this is a perfect example when you say, Risa, kill the spiders.
I got your bug bombs by the way, but I don't know if you've ever been on a bug bomb fire. So I gotta shut down the power. I gotta shut down the power in the station. So it's gonna have to be, after 24 hours, we're, we're gonna be evacuated parts of it. So I'm gonna do it partially as we go through. So it's not, it's not something you just go out and pop some bug bombs.
Oh darn.
Cause we, uh, we have ignition sources around here and other stuff. So anyway, and we can't leave here for 24 hours.
I mean, I've got something to add to the pest control thing. I have experience with it on a monthly basis in my apartments. And they're under quite a bit of regulations. Trying to do home pest control can get, be pretty hairy. They are following some guidelines as far as what kind of pesticides they're allowed to use inside, outside to, you know? For $65, you can have it done on a monthly basis. They do a fantastic job. Uh, if you want to go ahead and get bids.
Do you even budget for that for the next year?
It's something you can consider.
I think.
Maybe just quarterly too.
You know?
We have some spiders, but our, our bigger problems in the past have been rats up there. Cause they'd be almost critical sort of need.
Well then.
I think we took care of that.
Well, but you might consider putting it in the budget. That's fine.
I, I think, I think that'd be the way to do it and handle it in that way if we get down on a monthly basis.
Yeah. That was just one example though. Um, my, I'm, uh, my priorities are overriding your guys' priorities and that probably not supposed to be right. At least we should be talking about all those.
You're telling them insignificant.
No, but, but I have these high priorities on safety equipment, blah, 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 blah. But that is a safety issue.
You're calling me short.
Nope.
Well, whatever, three months, I might recommend that you have all the guy to come inside and do it inside.
We can do that.
You know? And, uh, all you have to do is make arrangements with the guy or he can make arrangements with somebody here and get it taken care of and it's always a lot of problems. Okay?
Did you already went down to 12, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good.
Number 11, I rated myself as a need improvement to communication with the staff. Um, I, I tend to communicate with people that are responding positively and easily to me and I, and I don't communicate with folks that aren't. Well, when I don't wanna hear the bad news, so that probably contributes to our communication problem.
What you're doing?
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
But I mean, so I need to address that. I need to, and communicate with them and not ignore them for a week.
Well, you care for me with regularity if there's an issue.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, that sort of goes along with number 16 because it was the same kind of thing. Um, part of my issue with, because it says training and stuff, see the board, at least from my standpoint, we don't get the information that you get when it comes to, um, anything that might be a liable, you know, liability issue, when it comes to whether or not maybe a firefighter was impaired. And I mean, how does that work? If, like, let's say there's a call out and Steve notices one of the firefighters that showed up was impaired in some way.
I, I can't imagine that.
He's not going me, I can tell you that.
No, but I mean, but I mean, are you supposed to?
I, I mean, I think his, his job is to make sure that, that you're not surprised. Now, he's not gonna come to you with every single detail, but I can't imagine he wouldn't, he wouldn't say, we had a situation the other night and I'm gonna give you just the Reader's Digest version here. But when it's, cause you want to maintain your level of openness. So when the, when the issue does come to you, you can deal with it. So he's going to bring you an issue that he believes is elevated to a point that we've got, something's gonna happen here or something's gonna happen, or we have a possibility of some litigation or whatever. Let, let's say that he got a complaint of sexual harassment. He would at least want to make sure that you're aware that, hey, this is what's going on. We're in an investigation right now. We get over through all that, then I'll keep you in the loop and.
That is, we, we need to know.
Absolutely. He, he needs to let, make sure you know if there's a landmine out there or that landmine might be.
Instead of investigation, probably an allegation that's gonna start the process.
Allegation that gets to the investigation, to so forth and so on. Whatever it might be, you know? But you're absolutely right, Risa. If he, if he, if he thinks that you're, you're at risk, he, you need to know that.
Yes.
Also, he, he can get some guidance.
I wanna let you know, we already had this conversation, um, and it's kinda going over the personnel files in there. I, uh, those personnel files are mine. And I, I told a few board members here that it's gonna be a court order or a subpoena to let me in. But I'll say this, I'm not gonna let a drunk or a dober in here or I'm not gonna let him on there. We're getting background checks when we hire somebody. My commercial drivers get urine tests and drug tests. If I see somebody impaired, I've been doing this job a long time. I don't want a drunk driving me around.
No, but I mean, you keep.
And people that we've gotten rid of or have passed the tests are, they aren't here anymore and they're not coming back.
Right, but you keep us apprised of anything like you said, like a sexual harassment.
Right. And why, um, I, I, the offer I made to you guys was this, there's, we're not gonna go fishing in personnel files and stuff. But if we have a complaint, if I get one from the community, I'm gonna go in there and deal with it. And if, if you get one from the community or we get something wrong, I'll go in there and we'll sit down with the personnel file and we'll go through it. We're not going fishing. We're looking for a specific problem. We're gonna handle it.
Okay.
And, uh, and that's, I'll sit there with you. Uh, there's some information there that's redacted. Uh, these background checks, they're, I sign my life away to do that by the way. It's not gonna be disclosed to anybody around here. It's either pass or fail and you're not gonna know anything else about it. HIPAA and all that stuff, we have 10 years of medical records on all the citizens in our community. That's not going out. And I, and I, today I had heard and shredded 10 years ago because we just went into a meeting here. And, uh, there, and, uh, there's stuff in here, um, the DHS and the IMSAR, ISAC stuff, the national security stuff. It's coming to me and I've been cleared to do it, you know? And we've gone through our background checks and stuff. The board, you guys are the board and we're the firefighters and, um, you guys haven't been cleared for that stuff. I, I imagine it can be.
But chief, that's why you're in charge of personnel.
Yeah.
And you answer to this group here.
Right.
And that keeps them, keeps them at, at the level that they need to be. Because should something go south, then they're gonna have to make some decisions on it. And you want to be in that place. You want to deal in that. That's when you gotta fire chief board.
This SDAO's, I, I was against SDAO when it started. I'll tell, I, I thought that our, our previous insurance did a great job. But these guys have programs. This, uh, background check thing, uh, I, I had to register our district in it and I'm registered in it and it's coming to me and, and it's awesome. Man, I, I don't even have to talk to SDAO anymore. I go straight to the company. They're our company now for free. So that's great. And, uh, and they offer all kinds of benefits like that. And it's gonna help us immensely in the future on background checks and drug and alcohol testing and everything else. So it's a good deal.
Well, it's glad to hear you realizing that and recommending that, can you do it?
Yeah.
Because that was our goal when we actually started working that SDAO and SCIS was they, they came out and explained what they were going to do for us. And so that, I'll, we ended up with them and I'm glad you're seeing the benefits of it.
Well, I want you to understand that SDAO or not, I've been preaching morals and ethics my whole career. I'm a co-author of, when you guys are doing the ethics policy? I'm a co-author of an ethics document for our department where I worked in that. Uh, there's, whether we had SDAO or anybody else, I, I'm not gonna have anybody working here for me that I don't want working for me. And that's been the, that's been the policy of this department long before I came here, probably. So, and that's the way it's gonna continue. And then that, that cuts out, we had, uh, God, when was that? Couple of years back, we asked, and then we asked for volunteers. We got seven applications. Four of them, uh, never came back because of background checks. And then we had, we didn't get three out of them. One of them, their background check was no good and we only ended up out two firefighters. It's hard in Douglas County to get seven people that have a clean, dry DMV record or a criminal record. And a felony eliminates you no matter how long or anything else. And state organ felony eliminates you from being a volunteer firefighter. And a clean, you have to have a clean DMV record also for the EPT SST. It's hard. There's some good people that probably have, are re-updated and should come, but I can't do it. I can't use them. Did you, you were talking about six homes and stuff.
Yeah. Some of these are kind of redundant because it covers the same thing again about communicating with the board and.
Well, when I came up.
Responds positively, get guidance by the board.
When the, uh, after the recall, we were in a real different situation because we lost all the experience we had, good or bad. And, uh, what I did was, uh, I remember Bob brought in the A3P thing and we were addressing all these specific issues. And most of those issues had already been addressed by the way. Maybe they weren't addressed really well written stuff. I made up a whole bunch of information sheets because Bob was asking me to do these things. Now, I don't know where they ever went, if you guys ever got it. It was about mutual aid, vehicles, fire prevention, all those kind of things. And I provided the equipment lines to Bill when he asked me. And I still have them all in there on the thing. Uh, I printed up some, he asked, remember he asked us, why do we exist? We're all supposed to put in 14 things. Well, I wrote 13 things. This is what our fire department has to do, state by state law. And that should have went to everybody so we know what, what we're doing. Then you could tell me, then you could see what I'm being held accountable to do.
Well, I think it's in our mission statements, is it?
Well, not the, so, yeah, some of them are. But, um, this is specifically the things we have to do for the state and, you know? I, I wrote some copies, you guys can read, you guys want to, I'll call it. There's one posted on the board out there.
Put it on the window, please.
Yeah.
Well, so anyway, um, having, having been on the board since, uh, July of, uh, 2013, I think we've come a long way as far as getting the policies and procedure manuals and ethics. It's all, um, updated to the point where they actually are working for us. And I think we can only thank Risa Ricks for bringing that up to date. I mean, she's put in untold number of hours putting those together. And they've been looked over by, uh, Eileen Akins.
Yeah.
They have been, you know? And she made us rewrite a few pages, but the, for the amount of work that we put into it, she did a fantastic job and I think she should be applauded for that. So.
I, I totally agree. She did a lot of work and I understand that. Um, my, uh, I, some of our communication problems, I think, I'm, I'm a long-term fire service guy. It was some, we always had, you, Dave, Matt or Siffer or some of the other guys on the board. And I was really trying to, the very first meeting or two, I was really trying to give you guys some of the fire department culture and information. Like I remember we talked about hoes, calling sticks and they got frozen back easy. You haul them in on a truck, cause. Well, there's a million of those things that, um, I think communication wise between us and how much stuff costs and what we need. how much stuff costs, and what we need, and what's lawful and what's not, that would solve a lot of our communication problems, and I, I was kinda leaning towards that, but I got, I got a feeling, especially from our previous board president, that rather than wanting to learn, you wanted to tell me a lot of stuff, and I wasn't receptive to that at all. There you go.
I'm not telling you.
So, there's a lot of stuff to know about the fire service, and I wish I could provide you guys a, a little blurb every month, so you could learn a little bit more.
I simply want to know if we had a flat bed big enough to haul those stiff hoses.
No, we don't.
That's right.
Thank God.
For the record, Steve, have we ever denied you or the firefighters anything that you needed?
Equipment-wise?
Equipment-wise, or PPE-wise? We've tried to bend over backwards to make sure that you were properly, you know, taken care of, and I think that we, we as a board have felt that we didn't, we didn't get recognized or don't get recognized for trying to make sure that you are being taken care of. We do understand that you can't function out there if you don't have the proper equipment, or the firefighters aren't protected properly. We have an invested interest in that as well, we're also taxpayers, so we want the fire department to be something that we can be proud of, as, as a whole, not just for the board, but as a fire department as a whole.
I think we have some good lines set right now on that. We had a few issues about that, I don't, there's stuff that I don't think you guys need to be involved in, and I, I think I voiced that, and I think we're there. And I, I try to give you a report, inventory and stuff, and, and explain what stuff costs and how, and what we need and everything, and the fire service is always changing, a lot of the standards and stuff, or recommendations, you guys remember all the way back to Fort Swager and Rainwater and San Antonio, there, I tell you what, when this OSHA thing goes through, which is still pending, it's supposed to be done November, that's state law, so we're good.
Right. Things change.
And we're, we're good. There's a lot of departments in the state, a lot of small departments, they're gonna be hurting for money.
I have a question that I would like to address, and see if Roy thinks this is okay. I would like Steve to address each one of the board members, and I would like you to tell us, each one, what you think we could improve on.
I've never heard that one before.
Hey, this is my evaluation.
Right down the line, but he goes one at a time.
Well, it is his evaluation, but-
I know, but he gets a chance, I think.
How about if we finish up the rest of this first? And we can finish up-
Your old ones for me after that, so.
Oh, I've got another two.
Oh, dear.
Which number?
Oh, which one?
Eighteen.
So do I.
And it's already maintaining correct communication, I do a lot of the stuff, I just go off and do it, and I don't tell anybody.
Well, like I said, a lot of these are the same, that's why I was lumping them together, but then after that-
It ties into that communication piece, you know, you're not on an island, you know.
Right. Now, you guys give me some great, I have some leeway, like five hundred dollars per buying stuff, so man, when I got the budget approved, I say, "Five hundred bucks, I got it, here we go." And then I gotta remember, come in the meeting and go, "Hey, this is what I'm buying, and this is why."
You have to remember that if you've got a situation where you need to exceed that, you can come and contact the board, and we can take care of that problem.
I just want you guys, you guys understand, I'm, I'm not gonna waste money.
We know that.
We've already just done fuel, oil, and fuel, and utilities, and everything else, we made a lot of changes that have nickel and dime and add up to some, some pretty money, so. And I, when we go five hundred or less, I don't care, I know we have a three bid thing, I, I three bid everything, you know, I go, I shop all the different vendors and see who's got it.
Does anybody else have a two, or?
I had a two, but we pretty much covered that, you know, it was a communication thing.
I got a two on number twenty-two also.
So do I.
I don't respond positively to some suggestions.
That's the, yeah, that's the same thing.
Sometimes I find, sometimes I find it big business.
It's kinda all going, yeah, it's kinda all remaining to all the others.
I'm the same way, but sometimes I find a business that I pretend I'm chewing gum, because I'll chew three times, so I don't, the first thing, the first time I open my mouth, doesn't come out what I really wanna say. So if I pretend I'm chewing gum, then I'll sit there and I'll think about what I'm gonna say before I just say it, and that, that just seems to help me, and I, I had a number two there because of that, and I think we've talked about it before.
I think we all have put our foot in our mouth at one time or another.
So, now I still want you to have to go down the line one at a time.
Okay, and number twenty-one, I got one point five.
Gotta be a two, Steve.
Oh, is that about all the issues? What I would be, some of the board members have some personal issues that I consider some of the things I'm doing are more important, and I need to balance, so there you go. What else?
Where am I at? What number?
Just that twenty-two, so, you have anything else below?
Twenty-seven, I got a district, community, and a community involvement and performance. We, we do everything we can, go to school, I got involved in the Grange, I got involved in all this stuff, but the time, man, I'd love to sit at the farmer's market every weekend for three hours, or every Friday, and the time is just, I still haven't had the idea on how we're gonna correct that.
Something to work on.
Because we have to be able to reach the rest of the community somehow. We're reaching these guys, and we're reaching whoever's got the website, but man, how are we gonna reach the rest of the community out of there?
You guys do a newsletter?
Uh, may, we haven't in a long time, but-
We do, in fact, I just was editing it today, but District Two does one every quarter, and that might be another tool, you know, a cost, but if you create that in-house, you've got some post-engine, the production process, but again, that is a, a tool for getting to work, work out the community.
That's the way to do seasonal stuff, too. We, we, it seems to me it costs about three hundred bucks every time you do a manual, so, so we were thinking about that before, but it's, I think, it's more than worth it if we have the money to do that.
Something that will need adjustment for the next year.
And not make it a, oh, shoot, I forgot about this.
Thanks, Steve.
Chugyum.
Your turn.
Oh, for each, each board member? I guess with George, I'd like to, you just mentioned about churn stuff down, but just to stay, stay out of the central stuff, like the boots and all that stuff, I'm way, well out of proportion, I can take care of that stuff, and, and you don't have, you don't have to ask anyone. If you wanna know about the standards of boots, I can give you twenty standards on boots, or whatever the gear is, you know, and you have some previous experience in the fire service and all that. I guess that's another thing.
Well, I, I was accepting your explanation, it was not a big problem with me, and with some other issues, but I'd rather not go into that again, or rehash something that far out of taken care of, so.
For, for the three guys there, I just, you were appointed, and as soon as you're appointed on the list, you have as much power as everybody on the board, so, man, I was just hoping, grab it, go to it, just like Risa and George, we got a lot of stuff to do, and there's a lot to learn, man, if you guys wanna learn, we got people on the board that can teach her, if you wanna learn about vehicles, or anything about the fire department, man, I'd go to teach you.
I don't wanna make you feel like I'm not putting in any input, but I, there's a lot of stuff on here that, I ain't gonna be able to use this excuse very much longer, but I'm still learning a lot, learned a lot in the meetings that we, that we had, the SDAO taught us, you know, about boards and stuff, and I go through that all the time, and more and more, I learn about how much more I can really speak up, but I've never once felt that any of the firefighters, nor you, Steve, that ever treated me wrong, I, I think it's a happy place, and it's, we've had our glitches, but, yeah, so there.
And Risa, I, like I said, I appreciate all the work you guys have done, you've, you've done the most of the big work and all that kind of stuff. Communication-wise, I don't know what it is, I, you and me, and I don't know what it is. I gotta work on it, but hopefully you can work on it, too, we can work together.
I'm easy to talk to, I really am.
Well-
By my cattle.
Oh, yeah. We can talk about the past. Yeah. I don't know, I guess we can't talk about the past, I don't wanna talk about the past anymore, but the, my, as chief, my politics isn't involved in the organization here, and our politics don't match, it didn't match when you guys came in, the very first executive session we ever had was a, and, and just keep, we gotta keep on going forward, I mean, it's all about the, it's all about the fire service and the public here, it's not about us.
It's supposed to be.
I don't, I got a strong, strong sense of right and wrong, and that I, in my perception, and man, when I see something wrong, I, I, if I think, and I perceive it as wrong, I go after it, so I'm, I gotta, I gotta stop that, I guess.
You need more hats?
More hats?
Uh-huh.
What kind of hats?
You got enough hats?
Give a brief.
George?
Yes, sir.
I, I, if, if it's okay, I'm, I'm gonna give him an evaluation of what I've observed so far, that's, that's okay with you? Do you wanna hear my thoughts?
You know? I'm trying to buy those, because if I had a bad evaluation, I'd, yeah, if you had a good one, I was hoping I got some kind of raise, 'cause my daughter's getting braces Friday, and I-
If he didn't give you a raise, how many more hours can you put in?
Double your income.
So, can we finish this on the last sheet?
You do anything you want to.
And then get to your-
I just got a couple ideas for the board and for-
Okay. I know, I've, I've got something I wanna tell the chief, and I think that we need to compliment the chief last year in the budget, and we really worked well with him, and I think we really came up with a good budget, and it worked fairly well with everybody, so hopefully we can go through the same thing again this year, and get it to smooth, and even smoother than what we did last year, so that we can move on. So, Steve, you did a hell of a job last year.
You guys, we all did.
You know?
Yeah, you did it for the community, too.
Yeah, from what little I know about it, you were very up on the equipment, like you said, all the testing and everything, the, the maintenance on the vehicles, I think, I thought it was great.
Anyone wanna take up the next one? What could the chief improve upon?
Well, it's just the communication thing, and I think we all know that, that a big , and all it can get is better. Please.
Well, one of my traits has always been, when somebody tells me to do something, I take off and do it, and I don't check back, and usually do it successfully, and that's some of the communication problems we had this year, I, those are things that, some of the stuff that, we talked about this year, working, for example, God, he needs to, working with Susan Shepard, early on, she was impacting me a lot, coming down here and going through the files and stuff, and I asked the board, I said, "Hey, who do I work for? Do I work for you, or do I work for her?" And I think I was told to cooperate with her any way I can, but I still worked with the board, so I did, and so what happens is, I just go ahead and keep on doing it, and I'm not gonna check back, because we went, got our way through that budget, and I thought that the communication between you and her was happening, I guess it wasn't, but anyway, that's my tendency is going, look at, my tendency is, I take off with what you give me, and I just go do it, and, and, and I probably don't get enough feedback about this.
We worked very well with Susan on the budget, and so, there was no issues there.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, that was one of the things, the budget was part of it, and as it went on, that's okay, I understand, and I, I just, just wanna let you know that one of my traits is, you guys gotta keep a little bit of grain on me, just like shoot me a blurb or something, or else I'm just gonna go, I'm gonna try to tell you during the meeting what we need and everything, and if you say, "Yeah, I'm going," and I may not call back and tell you how it's going.
Take more.
I just might keep on going.
Well, as long as it doesn't, okay, that's fine and good, as long as it doesn't conflict, like, getting contractual or anything like that, and I think, yeah, yeah, you understand.
But if you guys give me the approval to do something, like, I, I try to keep you up on the equipment I buy and everything, all this stuff, I've been better on it the last few months, because for a long time, I was just buying stuff, it's less than five hundred bucks, I'm buying it, here's the bill, and why do we need it, why, why did it go that way? I wasn't so good on that, so I, I need to do that better.
What are your priorities for the upcoming fiscal year?
We, we checked, talked about some, like ten eighty, long-term thing, I wanna start planning on the next engine down there, it's due out in about three or four years, five years, gotta start talking about that, the budget, the public communication, I need to recruit some more firefighters, I'd like to get up to around twenty.
What about surplusing equipment out of here, that things that are not being-
I wanna talk to you about that, something happened today, it was about, when they were down here working on SCBA, so guys, we'll talk about it very, but, yeah, so we need to get rid, we got a lot of stuff around here that's been here for a long time, and that needs to go, if we're gonna use it, and there's, there's a variety of things that can be done, salvageable stuff, can be sold, we need surplus, if it can be sold, it can be donated to college, the guy there is a, a part of the firefighters across borders, he, I, we have two SCBAs up there from the, I don't know, seventies maybe, and it's nothing here in the United States, but he goes, "Gosh, I was just down in Mexico, that's, they use those two right there, we need those," and I, they're not worth anything, I mean, you're not gonna be in any of that, and, so, next meeting, I'm gonna talk to you about surplusing equipment, maybe they could be put to use somewhere.
Just give the information to Robert, 'cause he's in charge of the inventory, so let him know what, what you're going to be surplusing, and we can take it out of the inventory, and the disposition, and how it was handled, and where it went, if it was giveaway, that, all we have, you get the proper paperwork and all that.
Let's go sell tax care, and we have a, we have a policy somewhere about how to get the surplus done, so that's been an issue in the past, and maybe it wasn't followed, so we're gonna follow, I'll take care of it.
The last, the additional comments, I, I would like to ask you when you could set up a meeting with the board and the firefighters, I've been waiting for a year now.
Well, that's-
And I would really like to get that accomplished, so that we could break that ice with the firefighters.
Okay, well, it's gotta, it's gotta be a public meeting if it's the board, are you guys gonna come?
Well, we can go in a formal setting, where we're not, we're not gonna be making decisions, we're not gonna be voting, I think.
Well, I'm kinda against that, because whenever you put five board members together, it looks like you have a slide person.
Roy, what is your take on that?
Well, you can't come together for the purpose of training, as long as you're not deliberating to make a decision or, or doing that sort of stuff, so, you know, even, even if you did feel as though you, you need to advertise it, so you're coming together, but I really believe we can come together for that purpose, as long as you're not deliberating board decision, and you're ready to come to a training meeting.
Yeah, due to the fact that there's more firefighters in there, and board members, I would think that a Thursday would be a prime opportunity, because they're already got their agenda to be here, and it would be easier for five people than there are the amount of firefighters you've got fifteen.
You're not gonna deliberate about anything, you're not gonna do any board business, you're only talking to the volunteers, and that's okay.
And, and as far as I'm concerned, you could spread them out, I mean-
No, you're not, you're not, you're not deliberating about anything, that's not what you're here for.
No.
You're here for the purpose of, of training and talking to the firefighters and stuff.
Would it be better to have it in a setting such as the Grange, which is a lot more informative?
Well, you guys can work that out any way you want to, you know.
I, I just think that that would go a long way in establishing some kind of rapport.
I know, it's very important, but I can tell you right there, we're committed to this college thing, I, I'd like to put it on in one or so-
Well, yeah, we're talking after March, and maybe later, depends on the budget goes.
Yeah, we, and then we're gonna be starting the lecture, that's okay, it's very important.
Why don't we just wait until spring, that part, then we don't recall anything but just a BS session, and then we can eat food.
You're excellent. You were not the guest, I think.
Oh, I was just gonna suggest, my observations is, and Steve and I've had this conversation, I'm not saying something he doesn't know, he is an absolute excellent, excellent technician. His challenges is, is learning the management element and the fire chief end of it, he talked about that, he's more of a hands-on, get or done kind of fella, and so, he knows that's his challenge, if, if you wanna call it a challenge, but you're not gonna have a harder looking chief than this fellow, and a better technician, so you've got an excellent chief in that regard, and that's probably the only thing he and I have talked about, is kind of walking through that, that element, you just don't become a, a fire chief overnight, you know, he's a great leader, he's a captain, he's run stations, he's run all this sort of things, so he knows that's a challenge, but he's an excellent, excellent guy. Your challenge is, what I've observed, is that, is a reminder that you, you function as a collective, you're not his supervisor, you're- You're not his supervisor, you're not his supervisor, you're his supervisor. And where the water gets muddy periodically is when you feel as though you may need to supervise him personally. You don't. And that's where it gets fuzzy, for him and for you. Because you end up in that gray area. Just remember that you speak to him as a collective. That doesn't mean you can't talk his team, work through stuff. But he gets his direction from the collective, not from Risa, not from Robert, not from George, but from the collective. That's his supervisor. And it's hard as a fire chief when you have five different supervisors. It really gets, and then you've got the community, it's kind of chipping in his, in his ear, wants to, so he's got thousands of supervisors. It's really a challenge. But that's probably the thing that's kind of got you a little muddy, is that relationship to your chief. What, well, I've been here six months off and on, so. But you know, this is, this is a positive step. Of all the things I've participated in here, this is probably the best interchange and interaction that I've seen in this group, ever. There's not, wasn't any questioning, swearing, calling, banging. And that's the way it has to be. I said that at that last meeting. Once you guys get beyond that, you can be successful. You guys all have the right thing, you're trying to accomplish the right things. It's that communication piece. And he already knows, he, he knows what his challenges are. You know what your challenges are, you know. And I said, I'm happy to help guide you through, but that piece has to be fixed. And once it's fixed, you're golden.
Robert, how do you feel about the meeting tonight?
Oh, I think it's great. I don't like the tension that sometimes, I understand there's tension in everything you do, but sometimes it seems escalated beyond control.
How about you, Risa, are you satisfied with the progress we made tonight?
Tonight? Oh, yeah, sure. Was I here? Oh.
Bill? Okay, Hank?
I'm great.
You got anything to add to it?
I, I'll just repeat what kind of Roy said. I've been thinking, I think that this is a huge step in all of us. And I think we need to take this meeting and take it out the door too and learn the, we need to talk to each other the same way, whether we're in here or we're outside.
Can we have a good hug?
Yes, and some wine.
Can I say one more thing? What, one, oh god, maybe you guys won't be so happy. Well, the communication, the sense of the policy has been set out. We had very specific duties a while way back when we had administrative system like Amy Anderson Rice. And for me, that was the big point when she left. And the board, the elected board, said that they wanted to be a working board and took over a lot of business for this department, which I don't think was their job. And the first thing they got involved in really is, got all messed up. This insurance thing got all messed up, even though it ended up right, it got all messed up. And so now it's been kind of switching back. And like the working stuff thing, ah, man, you give me that thing, I'll handle it. That's all I need is just to have it, I'll handle it. And I'll show you how to do it and I'll tell you what I did and I'll try to save us money. But our policies don't, our policies don't say who's doing what without a person here, an office assistant or something, our policies don't say who's doing what. And that's, well, man, we got to figure that out.
Hey, Steve, I briefly remember, since you talked about it, us talking about that in a meeting. And then it never got brought back up. So I think we need to revisit that, that option.
Now, this bookkeeping thing is, I mean, it's going to be coming up at the meeting and nothing's been approved. Man, there's a step in the right direction. That was a part of the office administrator job.
Right, right.
And I'm not an office administrator. Like I said before, I don't mind doing training, I don't mind being a chief, I don't mind going on calls. But man, I'm putting, I did 160 reports this year. I'm doing that stuff at home when my wife's taking a shower. Thank God she spends a lot of time in the shower. So at eight o'clock, nine o'clock at night, I go on the computer and start doing reports and stuff. And that's when I have my time to do it. So that's the kind of stuff that really impacts my ability to be a volunteer chief is the paperwork that used to be done by administrative system.
Well, we're going to kind of farm up as much of the financials as we possibly can. And I think it keeps it arms length from everybody here on the board as well as from you. And we pull the reports as we need to get them. So I think we're trying to get that way and get it completed before the budget meetings start. And so we get that out of the way.
This budget thing is kind of an easy issue. I'm positive it's not a great issue.
Anyway, I need a motion for adjournment. We'll get a motion for adjournment in a second. If you'd favor say hi. Thank you very much for coming. That's the end of the review, Steve. I see you still got your hat on.
Nobody said I got, I got some white out. You guys kidding me, son? Go on.
Yeah, George, you guys have a stand. Do you want the backboards?
Nope, nope. I have that on hard drive.
Provides good overall leadership, provides a good and sound organization.